I'd like to call the Chesterfield Township April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting to order. If you could please silence your phones. And with that, we will stand for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, I'm gonna take roll call. We have Rick LaBelle.
Here.
Kathy Vosberg.
Here.
Richard Brokhardt.
Here.
Brian Carr is excused tonight. Ralph Jaworski.
Here.
James Klonowski.
Here.
Mark Renaud.
Here.
Eric Hyder.
Here.
And I'm Carl Leonard. We're all here, and I'd like to mention that Jonathan Palin from the billing department, I'm sorry, from the planning department is here. And we have Ava and Joe.
Joe.
Joe, oh, there he is. From Giffords Webster. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April first, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
Have a motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Rick LaBelle. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to approve the agenda for tonight as submitted.
Support.
Have a motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Mark Renaud. Any discussions or comments on the agenda? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And motion passes. We have public comments, so anybody in the audience that would like to come up and talk about anything at all for three minutes, please do so. And when we're done with public comments, we'll start the regular agenda. Anybody like to come up? Seeing as nobody.
Make that a house.
A gentleman just came in and just wanted to mention that you have three minutes for public comments. You can talk about anything you'd like at this time. So you got three minutes if anybody wants to come up. State your name and address for the record.
Okay, can we like hit the button? My name's Ken Baker. I'm the Air Installation Compatible Use Home Program Manager for Selfridge, and I provided some comments concerning the site plan submissions tonight. I don't have any specific comments that I'd like to talk to, but I didn't know if the planning commission or the applicants had any questions. Sorry I rushed here. I went to the other, I went to the other building.
Oh, that's okay.
So I was rushing to get here. I was like, am I, is it canceled?
I'm glad you made it here.
So I apologize. But, no, I could talk to any of the comments. I didn't know if there are any questions. There was a lot of technical stuff that I provided. I did want to talk a little bit about the Signs three sixty project, but I could talk to those later or whenever.
You have to.
It'll probably take more than three minutes.
Not your opportunity, yeah.
So, well, the ACUS program, if you're not familiar with that, was designed to help planning officials with decisions concerning the public health and safety and welfare of local community and military members concerning land use compatibility. I did provide comments concerning the Signs three sixty project earlier to Ms. Zalinski on ten April, and there were a couple of comments that I wanted to talk to about, a little bit about that. Sorry, I'm just a little flustered because I rushed to get here. But, so, I did have some talking points that I could go grab, but I'll kind of just kind of talk to it a little bit. The, we commented regarding accident potential zone one. If you're familiar with accident potential zone one, if you're not, it's off the end of our runway. There's a three thousand by three thousand foot clear zone, and then after that, there's a three thousand by five thousand foot, which is accident potential zone one. We reviewed the ACUS report concerning that, and the proposed land use would be compatible in ABZ one. The only issue is twenty-five people per acre is the recommended land density or the recommended density for land use in that area, and we are hoping that the planning commission can take that into consideration. The, the, it's also in the sixty-five to seventy-five decibel noise contour. We evaluated it for compatibility concerning that, and land use would be compatible in the sixty-five to seventy-five noise contour. The only concern is, that's like a generic review. So if Signs three sixty has equipment that would be sensitive to vibration, or has noise sensitive areas in the building, we would recommend they use land use attenuation, or recommend they use sound attenuation, sorry, with respect to the development in that, in those portions of the facility. We also looked at the property concerning imaginary surfaces. Our imaginary surfaces are one to, one to fifty off the end of our runway, which is, when you come off the end of our runway, one every fifty feet out, one foot up. This is for height restrictions, and we evaluated that concerning the proposed property. The building would be forty feet in height. It didn't have any information on the drawings for the facility, so we're not expecting like, anything on top of the facility to be more than twenty feet. And I believe that it was identified that nothing would be above sixty feet. So if nothing's built above sixty feet, it would not penetrate our imaginary surfaces.
I think some, I think some of that'll come up tonight, and unfortunately, the three minutes is up.
No, I figured that. But, I mean, I can talk at the end. We didn't have any concerns with respect to the development, but I can talk to those at the end, if there's a chance to talk.
If anybody has a question that we need an answer, maybe we can come to you with it. So we have the letter.
I appreciate it. Yeah, pretty much. I was just kind of reiterating what was in there. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thanks for showing up. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a question. It seems like, you know, that he has, it seems that he has quite a bit of information to get to us with this three sixty program.
Yeah, honestly, honestly, the, we appreciate the plans and the thought that went through with Plans three sixty. It's very compatible for that use and location, but there were some concerns regarding BASH-related issues that we'd want to talk about, and we can talk to that with the applicant or any of the planning commission officials later.
Where I'm going with this is maybe we should consider having him as an agenda item at our next meeting, and so we can continue on with this. I mean, does it seem worthwhile to you, you guys? No?
I don't have an opinion yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. There are no public hearings tonight, and we can start with our regular agenda items. First item up is the sign review for the Bushimis, and we'll let Mr. LaBelle start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A is sign review J twenty-five dash zero three eight nine. It's Bushimis at two nine two three zero twenty-three mile road. We're requesting a variance on the Chesterfield Township ordinance of chapter fifty-two signs, variances for freestanding sign with electronic messages. There are, there's three, three different items for variance this evening. Is the applicant here this evening?
I'm here, sir.
Would you mind coming to the podium and just kind of go over what your situation is and your hardship while you're requesting a variance?
Yes, sir. My name is Haytham Situ. I'm with Situ Industries. We're the manufacturer and engineering company that designs this, and actually a close friend of the owners there as well. We, first of all, I want to thank you very much for allowing us to be here and taking up your time here. Bushimis had a sign, those of you that are part of the community, if you remember, the original Bushimis sign was nearly twenty-eight feet in height back not that many years ago. And they were asked at some point, I'm not sure what year it was, but they lowered it to the requested height, which was twelve feet at the time. Now, I believe it's lower than what they're actually asking for. I believe one of the reasons they might have been given this at that point, it's right in the middle of their parking lot. And if you've visited Bushimis there, you'll notice that it's between parking spaces. There's a car, and this, actually, a couple of cars on each side. There could be vans, there could be pickup trucks, SUVs, and so on and so forth. So I'm assuming that that's one of the reasons why the height is where it is now. We're not looking to change the structure of the sign, the height, or anything like that. The square footage, at the time when they put this thing together, was ninety-six by a hundred, which comes out to sixty-seven, sixty-seven point, sixty-six point seven, which is, I think, two square feet or so above the allowable. I mean, if we have to, we could block off four inches off the bottom that would remove the, you know, the two extra square feet. The, again, the height is one of the reasons why we're here. We'd like to keep the height where it is. I mean, honestly, they would rather have it higher because they keep getting obstructions. They get deliveries and cars and parts and so on. And if you're actually driving, sometimes you can see it, but if you look in street view, it looks like the sign is very clear. But if you're a driver and you're in a sitting position, and there's a van or car, it really blocks the first six to seven feet of the sign. And you as a part of the community, you drive by there all the time. You probably noticed this yourselves. The LED screen they're asking for, they don't, they want as simple as possible of a sign. They did not want gibberish pollution, like they didn't want to put the typical liquor store stuff like check cashing, whip coupons, deliveries. They didn't want to put all that stuff on there. They just wanted a very clean-looking sign. They wanted to just put the basic emblem, Bushimis, which you see here, which is on almost every single Bushimis you've been around. The upper sign, they wanted a proportional sign so that they could put content like a picture of a pizza, single items, not all the extra text that you normally see on a, on a screen. What they opted to do, which is, I really commend the folks at Bushimis for this one, is they came to us, they said, we don't want a sign that looks like a bunch of dots like you see around town. Like a gas station has these LED signs, a lot of, you see pixelations. They went with the highest possible technology we offer, and that's a six-millimeter screen. This thing will not even look like an LED sign. It will actually look like a print on, on the, on the sign itself, because the technology is at two-hundred-and-eighty-one trillion colors. It's amazing how the technology is now. So when you put a picture on there, it actually looks like a picture. It'll be a single item, images, no motion, no video, no flashing, no scrolling, none of those things. The technology comes also ready with brightness sensors, so it's not one of those where you see where, at nighttime, where it blinds you to death. Personally, I'm a manufacturer, and I hate those. So we put a sensor in there, so it automatically dims twenty-four hours a day according to the ambient light. The size we're asking for, it might be one of the considerations here. That's the size, the proportion that we have there is identical to the ones we use around almost all jurisdictions, so it's perfect for, not just for the client, not just for the person there, but we also publish amber alerts on these. These are cloud and cellular-based. A lot of cities, they email us directly to data at maxlight.com, and we publish things like tornado alerts, snow alerts, amber alerts, God forbid, and things of that nature. And that height allows us to put photographs on there. If we were to reduce, because of the existing width, if we were to reduce the square footage, you end up with a ticker tape kind of LED sign, and then all you're gonna do is put text on there. And again, they want to avoid just having text. They want to put nice photographs and pictures. They're actually part of the community. You know, you've been to Bushimis. They're a family-owned and community-oriented business. They want to put things on like, congratulations to the football team, congratulations to this, this kid just won an award. So they want to be able to put photographs on there. To do that, you need height. And unfortunately, to get height, and you know, with the width, that's how, that's how it translated. With that said, I think I explained why we're looking to do this. And this is an embarrassing part, this last part I want to mention. On, we submitted our application and on a, I forgot, is a gentleman here from the, we received an email from the city, like, just like, because we submit applications throughout the entire United States. We do work, even though we're located in Pontiac, we do work across the country. We do work for General Motors, mom pop shops. We do a lot of churches and such. So we applied for a lot of permits. We received an email with a permit number and a thing to pay for the permit. One hundred percent of the time, in everywhere, every other jurisdiction that we do with, that means that's the permit number, the job is approved, and we move forward. Well, that protocol on our end has got to stop as of this last week, because apparently that's not how it's done here, or maybe it's on oversight. I could recommend maybe some wording that would go in that email that says, this is not a permit to move forward, this is just a permit number we're issuing to you. So anyway, with that said, that Tuesday morning, we get that word, joy, over, happy, hey, the permit is issued. Tuesday, we went into production. By Thursday morning, the sign is eighty percent complete. Thinking, hey, permit is there, everything's groovy. Then we receive the heartbreaking email that says, the permit, in fact, is not issued. Again, that's just one of those things that just happened. But regardless, I'm here to ask for the opportunity to present this to you and ask that hopefully this is not such a hardship that is beyond your review and acceptance. And I look forward to answering any and all of your questions.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll bring it back up to the board. Do you have any questions, Rich?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Renaud?
Not so much a question, but a statement.
Yes, sir.
One, I appreciate your response, because you actually identified the five issues we have to identify. You addressed them all, which, for some reason, is very rare in our, what we do up here. So good job there. Though I am, I will be somewhat critical of what you said is embarrassing, is you gotta read those emails.
We read the email. We did. We read the whole, I read it twice. I had the project manager read it, the production guy read it, everybody read it, and it just says permit number. And so when we see a permit number, it's automatic, like City of Troy, you know, we do a lot of work with Troy and City of Pontiac, and we actually do inspections for City of Troy. They call us up, and we actually go do our own inspections for them. We're a UL manufacturer as well. All our signs are UL manufactured, and we certify UL certifications. So I am completely, I'm all, I, it's embarrassing on us. The guy did not want to come here with me today. He goes, Heytham, take me, throw me under the bus. I read the email, and I read the email as well. I'm a mechanical robotics engineer, so I'm very particular about the details. So when I read that email, I was like, guys, that's one of the fastest permits I ever seen in my life.
Well, I applaud you, A, for changing your process on that.
We are gonna change our process.
And acknowledging that. But like I said, good job.
I wanted to acknowledge it because it's, just to be fair, you know?
No, that's good. Like I said, but good job on addressing the five issues, because that really helps us.
Sure.
In rendering our judgment. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Vosber?
No comment directly on this application, but we may want to consider the size of the sign, especially when they're electronic like this, for a future agenda item. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hyder?
Do you have a practical difficulty between the eight and twelve feet?
I think so.
Or is there a difference of visibility?
You know, the problem is, this is the sign right here. Right next to it are parked vehicles on this side as well as this side. Coming at an angle, you might be able to get a visual of it, but in reality, it's right, and that's one of the reasons why it used to be twenty-eight feet in height. It used to be actually a hundred and thirty square feet, actually a hundred and thirty-eight square feet originally. That really sign was huge, and they lowered the design. So they, actually, they took a pretty good hardship, you know, I mean, cost-wise and visibility-wise. And I think that twelve foot is, you lower that sign, it's, you basically just might as well put it inside of a vehicle, you know? It's just, you know, you're part of the community. You've been there, I'm sure. You know what I'm talking about. Now, if it was, if it was on an island, me, me personally, personally, I like ninety percent of the signs to be completely monument signs. I like them to be six feet up maximum or eight feet maximum. I'm in favor of those. I think those are easier to read and everything. But in this particular situation, it just doesn't, doesn't, it really hurts them quite a bit.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski? Well, I know what happens when you don't read, because every single day I deal with those issues, even when you do read. And I wish a lot of people were accommodating, and most of them are not. The only thing I would say is, can that sign be repurposed?
The sign, the one we?
Yeah. I mean.
I'll be, and I'll be honest with you. I was prepared to tell you that, just so, because I can, I could be coming in here and blowing smoke and all that. I could have the sign installed in two days, just to prove, and you could void the permit if we don't have it installed in two days, because that's really how far it is done. It's completely finished.
Well, realistically, too, how many times, how many cars are parked in that front? You've got a lot, there's a lot of parking.
I went there two occasions, and both times, those cars, there were cars, I had to park around the corner. So it's, in reality, I mean, whether it's one time or a hundred times, that is the situation. That's one of the reasons why I believe a previous board or someone, you know, let them, you know, have it higher at that point. Because otherwise, I would say, again, I'm personally in favor of monument signs, but in this particular case, I think it would be really a hardship on them to, to actually lower it.
Well, my only comment is, we've worked really hard to clean up the signs in this township.
I completely.
And to lower them, and we are, we are put in this position all too often. And it just, you know, where we want to say okay, it just puts us in an awkward position moving forward.
This particular client has already been made to take it down. He's already taken it down some, once. Now again, and then, you know, behind vehicles. That's, that's the only situation.
The only last thing that might work in your favor, you mentioned amber alerts or community support. I mean, that's something we should consider. I mean, if there, I mean, would they charge for that?
No, 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 no. It's a, it's a free service.
Would they be willing to do that?
Our company offers that. A lot of the cities across the country use it. All the churches offer it. We do Charlotte County up, up north, Oakland County Road Commission uses our screens. They're always, that's, that's the intent, is, they're part of the community. And Bushimis is, Bushimis, even though they're, the name Bushimis is a franchise, it's a family-owned business. These are not like some guy from somewhere, they hire or hire local people. They're a family company, and they're, you know, they're looking part, to be part of the community. As a matter of fact, we specifically talked about, I go, listen, this is one of the things that we, you know, we require, and that's, our system offers that service.
Yeah, and this, this one's a tough one for me. My heart's saying one thing, my brain is saying another. So, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, I could see the practical difficulty here, so I, I would have no problem with it. Thanks, sir. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
A comment and a question. I, too. I guess I'm okay with the extra couple, extra square foot. I'm okay with the size of the LED sign, but the height is, I'm having a little bit of heartburn with the, the height of the sign. Just a simple question. Can you move the sign? Are you, are you replacing the base and the foundation?
No, no, not at all.
Can you move the sign to the, the farthest east parking space and put it at eight feet?
You know, that would be a whole different engineering situation. That's all new footing, new electrical, new, I mean, that's just a whole brand-new everything. You know, you took maybe thirty thousand dollars and, and, you know.
That's all they have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But thank you for asking.
Thank you. Got a question. It was brought up that, years ago, it was dropped down from whatever height it was down to twelve.
Correct.
What was the purpose? Why, why did that take place at that time?
Honestly, sir, I don't know. I went on Google.
Put a new sign, or what, why did?
I went on Google Street View, and you could actually backtrack, and you could see it transition.
You don't, you don't know why they lowered it?
No, but they were told the city wants it at twelve feet, and they put it at twelve feet.
But that, but that was put out, that it was gonna be years down the road before they went around to enforce the height, and that's a couple of years off, I think.
They must have had some height restriction at that point, so I'm assuming they, they had to comply. Maybe, you know, when we do a lot of projects, sometimes, we do a lot of Jack's Car Washes. I think we're running into that situation with Jack's as well. They have a sign, a previous owner agreed, agreed that the sign would be lowered within three years or something to that extent.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, and we're working with them to try to get that resolved. I think, you know, we're looking to lower it to eight feet. There, there is no obstruction, there's no cars parked next to it or anything like that.
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, the ordinance has changed twice. It was, the First Amendment was in two thousand and six, and they had until two thousand and sixteen to lower, and at that time, the maximum height for a pylon sign was twelve feet, and then we amended the ordinance again, um, in two thousand and nineteen, so-
So they adhered, they adhered to the change at that time?
I believe it was in two thousand and thirteen they came in, so they were under the two thousand and six ordinance, but-
Because I don't think everybody complied with that at the time, I think there was probably some lingering aim.
And that was what, the, the, the date for the two thousand and six amendment was two thousand and sixteen, so we hit that date, and the, the decision was, was to extend that date. So in the process of amending the ordinance to extend that date, we kind of did a whole revamp, because that's when the Supreme Court case came out for content neutrality when it comes to signs, so we kind of did a top-down reevaluation of the sign ordinance, which then, at the time of their first lowering of the sign, the ordinance said a twelve-foot pole sign or an eight-foot monument sign. Our current ordinance doesn't distinguish, it's just a freestanding sign, and it's eight feet.
Okay, thank you. You know, the only thing is, you, they've already paid to, I'm assuming they redid the sign when they lowered it from the tall one, because there's still signs that are on poles that are pretty tall-
Oh, yeah.
-that will have to comply, and they've probably been up there a long time, they were probably up there prior to two thousand and sixteen, not everything gets done overnight, and so there's going to be a, a time where it's going to be more enforced, uh, as time goes on, because everything's, the new stuff is all being done that way, and others are changing. I, I kind of feel that, uh, I, I don't have a big problem with the twelve foot because they've already gone through it once, so it's kind of like, well, you changed it once, now we changed it on our end, and I think it's not fair to ask. Uh, and as far as the, the parking, there was another sign that we had recently that had the same situation with parking on either side, you couldn't see the sign. Even with this, you're forty-four inches off the ground, the sign's still going to be somewhat screened by a vehicle.
It is still covered, it is still covered, yeah. I had to, I had to actually, want to, want to take a picture for design, I actually had to put my hand above a, a vehicle parked there, just so I can get a picture of the sign.
Because even looking at the picture here, it's, you can see that the sign, the bottom of the sign is kind of like down below the side window, so, um, there's, to me, there's nothing outrageous here, the square footage is real close to what it should be, um, I just think because there was a mistake made, it's, and, and just misinformation about whether it was a permit or a review request, uh, and, and because they've already gone through this. The only thing that I'm having a little trouble with is why the, the top part has to be at fifty percent. What's, I see a picture of a pizza and some text, but is there a reason why?
The LED sign, we have flexibility on the LED sign, uh, and per se, but to really benefit from it, so it doesn't look like a ticker tape sign where you can't put images or people's faces on there, or, you need, you need height, and, and that just is a, is a perfect proportion for a screen, for content, for images, um, everything these days is round and-
And having the Bushimi signage still half-covered, is still going to be okay?
They want to be able to say the specials, that, to them, that's more valuable than the name, because they know, everybody knows, you know where Bushimi's is.
Well, yeah, anybody who lives around here knows where it's at. They know where all the Bushimi's are, quite frankly. This would be somebody driving down the road that maybe's heard of Bushimi's, so, I, I guess where I'm going with this is, I don't really have any big issues with what the request is.
Yes, sir.
Because of circumstances, what happened back in, you know, two thousand and six or whatever it was, that they already did it. Um, so, I see that there's an address now at the very bottom, separated from the sign.
That's your call, is existing, if you like it there, well, it's good for, fire departments like it, if you don't want it there, they could come off, it's up to you guys.
Is it okay there, just to leave it there? Right, but we do require that there's an address somewhere, so.
If you want it updated, uh, you know, that's fine, you know?
I mean, as long as it's visible, it's, uh-
Well, you know, if there's no cars parked.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to disappear.
We could, we could put it on top if you like.
No, it's, it's fine. Um, well, I mean-
Can you split the justice?
What's that?
The sign, you split the difference.
Then they, they're going to be doing all the cutting. I mean, there's ways to fix this, a half a dozen different ways.
Yes, sir.
Move the sign, cut it down, all of that stuff, and, and I keep going back to, there was a request to lower it from whatever it was, which I'm sure was much higher than twelve feet-
Much, yeah, yeah.
Down to twelve, and had we not changed that, we'd be dealing with two issues here instead of three.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, again, I'm, I'm just going to close with my comments that I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
And it's up to the board to decide where this goes. So with that, um, there's no other questions?
I have one other question. Mr. Palin, uh, since the ordinance, the new ordinance came up, have we granted any height restrictions?
Yeah, the one-
Over eight feet, just one? The one I can think of off the top of my head was the Tom's Auto Glass on Grashit. Uh, there may have been another one, uh, it seems to be one ringing a bell, but I can't think off the top of my head what it is, but for sure, the one, it was a very similar scenario.
I think it would, might have been twelve feet, but again, it was the same thing where it was low, and the cars parked on either side. If we would have pushed it to even go lower, so, I think there's a hardship here, so.
Yeah. Because I don't want to set a precedent, because all of a sudden, we changed the ordinance, now we're going back to twelve feet, to down to eight.
And, and again, I agree with you, and if the next petitioner comes in and says, I complied once, now I got to comply a second time, I keep going back to that, that we're double-dipping-
Yeah.
-the ordinance, uh, on this particularly one, so.
Quick question. Jonathan, are we going to do anything, make sure this doesn't happen again with an email, or is, we change, changing our process in any way?
We have already, you know, we right away went and checked to make sure it wasn't an error on our part, and the emails that do, they're auto-generated, and they do clearly state that, you know, your permit's been, or your application's been received, and it's on hold, waiting for review, so, yeah, we did double-check it to make sure, and-
Thanks. I, yeah, the email I received only states, the, I actually printed it out, only states, um, this is your permit number, I, yeah, I, that's, that's, that's why I had a heart attack, I was like, you know?
I think, I think in bold print, this is not a permit.
Yeah, it's just from here to here.
Well, you can, you can change the text, I think.
The following has been awaiting payment, the payment submitted, time officially disregarded this email, and that's all we got. We didn't get the, the other wording. If we would have gotten other wording, you know, it would have never, it would have been-
Oh, yeah, it is, sir. Okay.
They don't help me. They, they just make me look smart. Um, so, does anybody else have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. I want, I want to start by saying, your new sign, being eighty percent complete, bears no weight with me in, in this motion. I think it's an unfortunate disconnect, and-
I understand.
That's just the way it is.
Yes, sir.
That being said, I move to approve the applicant's request based on section fifty-two dash eleven, sub-paragraph A, there are five standards that need to be met for us to do this, and, believe me, this is not an easy thing for this commission to do, is approve this type of thing. In this instance, though, I think you've met all five. The, the proposed signage uses existing structure, the business has respected previous township requests to lower the sign, and I think you've been very thoughtful in your application. Strict enforcement serves no real useful purpose to the township resident. I also believe no risks to public safety or public welfare is, is here, and the current and updated LED messaging is a benefit for the people of Chesterfield Township, specifically the Amber Alerts and the things that we've talked about, that's a benefit. Lastly, I think this request aligns with the township goals of having orderly signage while supporting local businesses, and for those reasons, I move to approve the applicant's request.
I'll support.
And I'd like to, oh.
There you go.
I'll let somebody, I was just going to say I would support it for a very good motion, but if somebody else wants to support it, that's fine. Supported by Mr. Klonowski. So we have a motion to approve the sign review for J twenty-five zero-three-nine at Bushimi's, uh, as submitted, motion by Rich Brokert and supported by, um, Jim Klonowski. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate it, and happy Easter to you.
Read those emails.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, by the way, sign three sixty-five, amazing, amazing company, we use them often.
They should have read your email.
Item B is, item B is Watermark Church, um, site plan, it's twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two, it is at the corner of Washington and Baker Road, the partial ID is one-five dash zero-nine dash one-one dash two-five-two dash one-zero-one. Um, the address is fifty-four-two-zero-five Washington Street. Uh, we postponed making our decision back on four-one April first, twenty-twenty-five, giving the applicant an opportunity to make some adjustments to the drawings. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe from, um, Giffords Webster.
Thank you. Yes, so, uh, the, the short summary is that the applicant has addressed the items from the last, uh, meeting, uh, I'll just summarize them here. Uh, so, they needed to provide the building height, uh, to show that it met the requirement. Uh, they are showing a height of twenty-seven feet one inch at the midpoint, so they do comply with the twenty-eight foot maximum height for this district. Uh, confirming that the three hundred and seventy-five seats are for both the worship and sanctuary areas, and clarifying the use of the existing sanctuary, they have confirmed that in their, um, response letter. Planting, uh, an additional tree along each frontage to meet the requirements, they have added those trees, uh, reducing the over-illumination levels of the site, they have done that as well, they're now below that one-foot candle average. Uh, provide bicycle parking, they have added four inverted U-racks for eight total bicycle spaces on the site. Uh, there is a detail of that, uh, bike rack on, uh, sheet C-nine of the, the plan set, if you're looking for it. There were a couple of items for planning commission consideration, uh, so this is something that you should address in a motion. Uh, discuss the need for a loading and unloading zone, um, you do not have a hard and fast requirement for that, but you, you do have the, uh, responsibility under your ordinance for determining whether or not a loading space is needed. Uh, this being a church, uh, generally speaking, their loading requirements are going to be much lower than, say, a commercial business, I would say. Uh, but that is something that you'll need to make a decision on, and then, uh, determine the need for irrigation in the newly landscaped areas, so they are proposing to use, um, uh, slow-release bags, essentially, sometimes they're called Gator Bags, it's one of the brands that's out there, and what that does is, uh, you, you put it, uh, in your landscaping, usually around a tree, uh, and it slowly waters the tree. Uh, they are not proposing, uh, in-ground, uh, irrigation system, like a sprinkler system or anything like that, but you'll have to make a determination as to whether or not that meets the spirit and intent of your ordinance. Wanted to note a couple of other things, uh, one, they do have stone veneer on the, uh, front of the building now, and that, uh, it was a discussion topic previously, and, uh, they have, um, the, the metal siding on the other, uh, facades, but you were looking for the stone on the front. And also, they have added ballards as required around, uh, some of their utility boxes. Uh, the one thing we wanted to note is that they are noted as painted reflective yellow on the plans, and your ordinance requires that they be an earth tone, or like a silver or black, or something, uh, more subtle. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
All right, thank you. Anybody from the board want to ask any questions? I can go around. Mrs. Fosker?
I'm, I'm satisfied with the responses.
Thank you. Starter? Mr. Jaworski?
No, everything looks good.
Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, I agree, everything looks good.
Mr. LaBelle?
Everything looks great, thank you very much.
Mr. Brokert?
All set here.
Mr. Renault?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, um, and you listened to what we had to say, and then you responded quickly, efficiently, and I, so, very, kudos to you guys, great job, thank you.
And, uh, I'm also okay with it, I'm glad that you guys wrote everything down at the end of the last meeting, so we didn't miss anything. I know there was a little scramble there to find paper and pen, but, uh, looks like everything was handled, so, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion then.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's, uh, requests. All township requests from our April first meeting have been adequately addressed. The Giffords Webster site plan review from three eighteen has also been very professionally and adequately addressed. For these reasons, I want to make a motion to approve.
I'll support. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Brokert, supported by Mr. Renault, to approve the, uh, site plan for Watermark Church.
Mr. Chair, would you mind if I add, uh-
Not at all.
-Mr. Brokert would consider this, uh, would you please include in your motion the, um, the new revised drawing dates, so that can be, that can be reflected in the motion?
Good catch, yeah. Let's include the, uh, the new drawing dates.
April third. The drawings are dated April third.
The April third drawing date. Thank you.
Continued support, Mr. Renault?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, with that, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right.
Item C is signs three sixty-five, site plan, twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three, it's in a three, a C-three zone PUD, it's forty-two-point-zero-four acres east of Town Center Boulevard, and the, uh, the parcel ID is one-five dash zero-nine dash three-one dash two-two-six dash zero-zero-seven, and one-five dash zero-nine dash three-one dash two-seven-six dash zero-zero-five. If Giffords Webster will please go through their review, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. All right, so we'll be going through the second review letter that we submitted, uh, starting on page two, I'll go over the site background a little bit. So the PUD, PUD agreement has been in place since two thousand and seven, and was most recently amended in two thousand and nineteen. The applicant is proposing to construct an eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-square-foot industrial building on the east side of Town Center Boulevard. As for the development standards, they're in compliance with all of those. The two of note, uh, are the use, as well as the maximum building height, that differ from these standards, but do meet the PUD agreement. Going on to page three, following the site's standards, building surface materials in alteration, so the applicant is proposing to use insulated concrete panels for the entirety of the building, including the street-facing facades. Per subsection B, building frontages should be constructed with a minimum of ninety percent brick or similarly decorative and durable material, so the commission will decide if the material proposed will meet this standard. Uh, the applicant did say that they will provide the material boards tonight to show you all, um, and then the concrete panels are proposed to have three different colors to accent each other that are unconfirmed at this point, but the applicant shall confirm But the applicant shall confirm the colors of the panels and confirm that they will not be painted. Looking at the landscaping requirements. So there was an additional tree that was on the prohibited plant material list. And these were the nine Royal Raindrop Crab Apples and five Prairie Fire Crab Apple Trees. They're both fruit-bearing and which are on the prohibited list of the ordinance. So the applicant should use a different species for those ones. And then otherwise, for vehicle parking. And then this is on page four. The PUD agreement stated that parking shall be based on a time study prepared by a professional consultant and submitted periodically as the site develops for review and approval by the Planning Commission. This has not occurred in a number of years, we believe, and without any additional information, the required number of parking spaces for the entire site would be one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three spaces. So this is without any any revisions based on the ordinance. The applicant did say they will be submitting an employee shift count to demonstrate the need, to demonstrate their needs that are less than what is required. So the Planning Commission will determine whether this is substantial enough evidence to show that parking needs are less than what is required. As for EV parking spaces that are provided, the applicant just needs to show and confirm that they will meet the additional requirements that are stated in the review. And then, as for the bollards on page five, the applicant is proposing ten bollards in the rear yard that they want to have a yellow guard for. The Planning Commission will just have to determine if the yellow bollard cover warrants the additional attention and awareness for the site. And then going down to fencing on the bottom of the page. A six-foot-high chain-link fence made of heavy-duty rails is proposed around the twenty-four truck dock located in the rear yard. Two gates will allow access from the internal drive, and the fence and gates are both proposed to be black vinyl-coated steel. And the Planning Commission just needs to determine if this material is appropriate. And then as for the trash receptacles on the last page, the applicant is proposing the use of a trash compactor located next to the truck docks. And then this is located within the gated portion of the rear. And then the Planning Commission will just determine if this is appropriate.
Thank you. Would the, someone from the applicant's group like to come up and talk?
Hello?
Hi.
Please state your name.
My name is Matt Phillips. I live in Lenox. We're really hoping to make Chesterfield our home. Right now, we're in Shelby Township. We have about seven buildings. And we've just grown over the last, we started the company in two thousand and six. It was my brother and my father and I. And since then, it's just grown and grown every year. And for the last four or five years, we haven't been able to advertise because we just don't have any space. We just leased another building, so now we're up to seven in Shelby. And like I said, we just need a place that we can grow and call our home. Selfishly, we like this spot because it's really close to all of our homes. It's right next to Cabela's and the lake. Yeah, it's, looking forward to getting to know you. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before the gentleman steps away, before we get into the nuts and bolts and things, would you also describe what you guys do?
Sure, exactly.
What you do inside the building? You're combining seven buildings. What do you do?
Sure. We are the largest sign shop you've never heard of. We sell to other sign shops that can't afford or don't want to purchase the equipment, say, the big printers or the cutting equipment needed to finish the signs. So we are wholesale only to the trade. So Fast Signs, Signorama. So in, we used to have that little shop over there on Van Dyke in Hall Road, right across the street from Churney Lutheran Church. We were banner signs. And in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, my brother Mark had an idea, why don't we sell? Because we had some larger equipment at that point. Why don't we sell to the other sign shops locally that don't have our equipment? And so we started doing that. We went online, and it just took off from there. So we overnight all of our products. So if somebody orders today before midnight, we produce it and ship it out tomorrow. And everything is shipped overnight, so you'll have that product Wednesday, so.
Is that pretty much for any type of sign that you can turn it around that quick?
Anything printed.
Printed?
Yeah, so we do a lot of yard signs, a lot of sports banners for high schools.
What media do you use? Are you using plastic? Are you using glass, paper?
We use a lot of aluminum. J-Bond is a, another product that we offer. It's aluminum. It's skinned aluminum with fluted polyethylene on the inside. The yard signs that you see for, the political yard signs, those are all fluted polypropylene, vinyl banner material.
Will you be merging all seven of your of your facilities now into this one big one?
Yes.
Or are you keeping them all?
No, no. We have about four hundred, four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square feet right now, and we are busting at the seams. We need more space.
Congratulations. That's good. It's wonderful.
Didn't need to see you on Shark Tank.
Just, and I had just one real quick question. With regards to your customer base, because I know we were talking about parking, and you guys were going to provide some information with regards to the employee rotation. But from your customers, is it where, do they have to, do they have to come in, park, load everything up? Or is it like a drive-through where they pull up, you load them up, and they're gone?
Yeah, we do a local pickup. Do about a hundred and fifty to two hundred a day. They they don't even get out of their cars most of the time. They come. They text or call. Typically, we see them. We know the customers, and so the local pickup people come out and bring them their signage.
Mark, you want to just keep going?
Yeah, no, that was really the only concern I had.
Unless you had more stuff to say.
Nope, I think everything else actually looks pretty good, so I'm pretty happy with everything.
I have a couple more real quick ones for you. What kind of noise is generated in that facility? You're not stamping, are you? You don't have any heavy stamping gear, do you?
Nope. In any of the production facilities, there is no need for any hearing protection. It's all very low-decibel.
And you'll, you have a presentation for us regarding the parking and the fruit-bearing trees, what you're going to do there. You have that?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fasberg? No questions?
Do you have any delivery systems with that, or is it all all pickup?
Oh, FedEx. We deliver, yes, exclusively through FedEx. Everything's overnighted across the states.
How many people do you employ?
About two-hundred-and-fifty, two-sixty.
Okay, and they're all going to come over here?
Yeah. That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski? No, I just want to acknowledge the gentleman from Selfridge. I mean, have you spoken to him and took into his concerns?
I don't know exactly who he is.
Okay, and there's the letter. I didn't. Yeah, we we got the letter that they had turned in. Everybody has a copy of it. So if anybody's got any specific questions from that letter, we can definitely entertain it. Yeah, well, I just, the way I interpreted it, there was no concerns, but they just had some suggestions. Is that accurate?
If you, that's my interpretation. If you have questions for Mr. Baker, I'm sure that he'd be more than happy to address them. I know he went up there in the public comment portion, but if there's something relevant that he could answer, he can do that.
Well, I'm just saying, it just sounded like he had some suggestions to make the building a little better, so.
We're all ears. We want the best building.
Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, one of the concerns, they said, the Selfridge said that there would be probably, decibels would be elevated when, probably when, I would assume when the jets come in. I don't, is that going to be any concern for your building, or do you need to insulate your building more to keep the decibels down?
Not for the equipment.
Well, as far as the noise from the outside, from the planes and stuff coming in.
I would hope that our employees love that as much, the planes passing overhead as much as I do, so I don't know.
Okay, nothing more right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
Well, my questions kind of get into the nuts and bolts. Is this when you want me to do it, or you want to wait a few minutes, let the other gentleman speak first?
Um, I think we have somebody that wants to come in, so he may give you some more nuts and bolts to ask, so.
I appreciate you coming to Chesterfield. We look forward to having you here, but yeah, I've got a number of technical questions, so when it's my opportunity, we'll do it then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else wanted to step up and make some comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Mott from PEA Group, five-eight-one-zero-five Van Dyke, Washington Township. We're the civil and landscape designers for the project. Do you want to put the overall site? Would it be easier? So I'll just give you a kind of quick rundown of the facility and what's proposed at this time. When it pops up. We can start off, though, but as mentioned, we're looking to develop approximately forty-two acres for the Signs three-six-five development. It'll encompass with a eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-square-foot light industrial manufacturing facility, which is permitted use in the zoning. That'll also incorporate about twenty-five-thousand square feet of office space with inside it. The building height is forty feet, one-story, which is permitted within the area. There is a couple of comments regarding parking. Yeah, the current zoning ordinance requires roughly eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-three spaces for a facility on the site. Those requirements are kind of obsolete the way manufacturing functions nowadays. You know, a lot of it's with the electronics and stuff, the need for that amount of parking employees is just no longer needed. As stated, they're, they got roughly two-hundred-and-fifty employees. Currently, they have eighty, or a hundred-and-eighty employees in the day shift. Eighty in the afternoon and thirty employees in the evening shift. With the hope for that they're going to, you know, keep expanding and moving forward, we could be looking at the future of a hundred-and-twenty employees during the day. Sixty employees at night and, oh, three-hundred employees during the day and a hundred-and-twenty in the afternoon. So with that, right now, we've, we went through and we've calculated, we got three-hundred-and-eleven parking spaces shown. That that accounts for the current conditions and some future growth for their needs for each shift and the shift changes. We also provide for five-hundred-and-eighty-some additional landbank spaces that if they're needed in the future, you know, we can build that to accommodate any future employees. So with with not building out all this parking right at this time, we're saving green space. Asphalt, that's not going to be needed out there, but we can still adequately park for what their needs are at this point and in the future.
Do you have, real quick, do you have customers that visit? Because it seems like your your parking, it's still spread out, but at some point, when you have a bigger day shift, is it, you have the landbank so you can create more parking, but you don't have a bunch of customers coming there to?
So their their customers, as they explained earlier, if you look down on the south side of the building, they have a customer, covered customer pickup area. So that's where the customers come in, they wait in their vehicle, they bring the the product out to them. So there's not an overflow of customers into the employee parking area. So it's all accounted for in this area. In regards to the couple of other questions regarding the chain-link fence along the rear of the building, we are just around the truck court area there where the the docks are. We're proposing a six-foot-high vinyl-coated chain-link fence. It's in the rear of the building. It's not visible from the street front. It's durable material, and it's going to be vinyl-coated, so it's not going to be a maintenance issue with the the gates and stuff. That that's also where we're proposing the trash compactor. It'll be hidden back behind the building in one of the truck dock areas there at the back of the building, won't be seen by the public. So in regards to landscaping, we've met the requirements of the the ordinance. There was a comment on the nine trees. We'll address those. We'll replace fruit trees. We don't have any issues with that. There was also some discussion in the initial review comment of providing additional landscaping around across the southern property line. So we met with Township and discussed that. And as as we know, this property abuts the fly zone for Selfridge Air Base. And yeah, that portion of the property is zone residential, but it'll never be developed as residential with the flight zone through there. So the need for additional trees across there was discussed with Township, and at this point, we're not proposing any. They're not going to be needed. In regards to the EV spaces, we do have the EV spaces showing along at the front parking lot. Once we get further in the electrical design, we'll show the conduits out there. We'll show the actual EV charging stations with the details of, you know, what's being proposed, but they are meeting the requirements of the ordinance with that. From a site access point, yeah, right up there. As you can see, we have two entrances for the trucks to come and go. Shipping and receiving will be at the rear of the building. Employee entrance will be coming off the front there, to keep them separated as much as possible. In the event there's ever something that happens there, we do have a connection point so people can get in and out. We also had Eagle come out to the site. Eagle did a review of the the property and have determined that there's no wetlands on site that need permitting. And we've also met with the Drain Commission. We just received a letter from them the other day that the existing detention facility with minor modification to the outlet control structure will handle our stormwater for the development. Utilities are all available along the front end of the site, so we'll have no issues with utilities for for the project as well. So with that, if there's questions on the site itself, I can answer now, or we can have Dave, the architect, come up and go through the building facade. It's up to you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna. Okay, Mr. LaBelle has some questions for you.
Sure.
Just a couple of quick questions, if you don't mind. In the back of your building, you have six pads set aside for generators?
Correct.
Emergency generators, standby generators, is that just so you can keep the production going so that if the power, which our power never goes out in Chesterfield?
Yeah, those are just standby emergency generators.
Standby emergency generators. The only real concern that I have about them is, I'm sure, have you gotten into your electrical design yet at all?
No, it's still.
Is it a little premature for that?
Yes.
Keep in mind, keep, be conscious of the sound intenuating housing so that, because you do have residential across Twenty-One Mile Road. We'd like to keep the sign, the sound down.
Yeah, so that's, that's why we've tried to keep them behind the building to.
Yeah, they're back in the building with industrial behind. It's just, that sound carries a long way. And please keep in mind as well, when you're doing your design work, you're going to have quite a bit of power coming into the building. Probably going to be a primary customer with multiple transformers set around the building. Please keep in mind where you spot those transformers or any kind of electrical equipment, mechanical equipment, things of that nature, not to impede where if we ever do need to use those parking spaces, the landbank parking spaces, now we've got something in the way. And also, please keep in mind that we don't want any kind of mechanical equipment in the front of the building. I'm sure your owner doesn't want to see a crummy piece of equipment sitting in front of his beautiful building.
So so with, yeah, once once the mechanical, you know, transformers and stuff are identified, you know, we'll work with planning and engineering to make sure they're situated on the site appropriately and they're screened properly.
Yeah, because it's a lot easier, it's a lot cheaper to run secondary medium voltage than it is to run secondary voltage through that, through that large of a building. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say somebody else from the group wanted?
Yeah, we have the project architect here, David, who he can speak to the building side. If there's any further questions.
Before you leave, did anybody else have any questions for this gentleman?
If any site questions come up, and and we'll, you know, we did receive the Selfridge letter. We didn't see any concerns there, but we'll definitely be in touch with them to go through those comments and, you know, we'll have a teams meeting or something to discuss them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is David Brinkmeyer. I'm principal at FA Studios. We're located at two-six-two-six-one Evergreen, Southfield, Michigan. We are, we have been involved in the project since the beginning, schematic design. We are looking at proposing a very durable and environmentally kind building in terms of a concrete panel structure. We did provide a material board for you as well as an overall rendering. I don't know if you want me to carry those up to you or not. With with the the product that we are proposing, it's an insulated panel. And acoustically, it's going to help with the sound that was brought up by the Selfridge race, as well as the unoperable windows, and it'll be self-contained and heated and cooled within the, within the building. The the panels themselves. The, the panels themselves are concrete and they're porous. The, the process of applying the texture and the, the scaling of the wall is through a staining process. They stain the concrete panel. Concrete panels are porous, and it's a chemical bonding stain. I have examples. I have that one, and I have two other ones in the back that you can see. It is not a coating, like a latex coating, that would peel off. It actually, the mineral stain adds to the porosity and soaks into the, into the panel. The example is going around. Watch it, it's fairly heavy. So, but with, with that, we're allowed to take the scale of the building and, and alter it and, and add some character to it. If it was continuous brick, that wall would be pretty daunting and probably overpowering. We added large fenestration. The windows are sizable to the front where the lobby office is located, as well as throughout the building, we have located a series of, of daylighting aspects along the east facade or the west facade, excuse me, Town Center Drive. And that's, that's all I got. So, there's the example. Like I said, there's two more in the back, but, but you could tell that as you touch the product, you can see how it, it seals into the, into the surface. It's not a coating that would, like a latex paint coating, so.
Would you mind repeating how you're going to color the concrete? I mean, as you, as stated before, are you planning, were you planning on painting the building, or are you somehow going to stain?
It's, it's a staining process.
It's a staining process.
So, it's a, a company, Naukau, I, I should have brought, I have the literature at my desk, but it's, they treat all the, all the buildings in this, the same nature, but it is a staining process of a liquid applied that chemically bonds to the surface.
So, it's, it's after the product is produced?
Correct.
After the concrete or the panel is produced, then you stain the, you stain the, stain the product?
Stain the product. And it's, and it's based on, we, we aligned some reveals and we terminated at, at points where they can, they can start and stop the stain.
So, the colors, there's four colors there? Are you planning on four stained colors in that panel?
Yeah, I have two of the other colors in the back of the three, so, but yes. The yellow is Signs kind of, kind of logo color, so we tried to incorporate it a little bit into it, and then we use the series of grays, so.
So, with regards to the stain though, that is, it's a permanent, it's not like it's...
It's a twenty-five-year warranty. I mean, I mean, with any, any kind of finish, there is maintenance to it that's cleaning. We got to clean, clean the building and, and upkeep, so, but.
How long's this product been around? I've not seen this particular product.
The precast panel or the type?
This particular one here, like this.
Well, that's, that's an actual example. The, the staining company, Naukau, has been around, it says for twenty-five years, so.
Interesting. Okay.
We can, we can provide the literature, I can send it to you. I have it at my chair right here.
The sections on these, when they make them, they, they're made to whatever size you need?
They're typically, they're typically made either in ten, ten-foot-six or twelve-foot panels. Because of the number of panels and the size of the building, they probably will be about ten-foot, because shipping double panels on a truck, I mean, there is some logistics that takes place.
That little piece is pretty heavy.
Yeah, that, that is, it's actually a ten-inch panel, so there's a four-inch face of concrete insulation, and then another four-inch face, so that, well, composite of ten inches total. So, that is, that's just a square foot example of it, so, but yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
And you say this is stained, right? It's not painted?
Yeah, it's a stain. I can show you the manufacturer's...
It can't feel. Maybe that was our issue, was paint was peeling.
I mean, there is some opaqueness to it because there is, it helps hide the, the, there is items that get dinged or whatever on the panel that needs to be filled in, and then, then it's treated, so.
I mean, I think it looks better than brick.
I'm happy with it.
And our ordinance is brick or better, so.
Well, it is a durable, it's a durable product, too.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If I may, there's a, there was an addendum to that PUD some years ago. May I read real quickly what it says?
Sure.
I got to find the right spot there first. Would you consider your company a, a national tenant? I mean, is this, are you nationwide as far as, okay? Because that's, that's what this, this, this addendum talks to. The CTC or the Agreement for the PUD shall be entitled to use parking lot lighting consistent with the lighting, I'm sorry, wrong line. Any national tenant whose building exceeds twenty thousand square feet shall be entitled to use, utilize its prototypical building design in lieu, lieu of applicable township requirements in this PUD. So, what that says is, if, if these gentlemen have been using this product in other areas nationwide or, you know, in their other buildings, then, then they're, it's just another thing for this PUD is, is allowing us to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, if you don't have anything else to add to it, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no questions at this point, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
I'll go three for three tonight. Yeah, I was gone last week. I'll make a motion here. I move to approve the applicant's request. I think today's review has revealed that all the concerns noted and the Giffords Webster Site Plan Review of three-fourteen have been adequately addressed. In addition, data's been provided that addresses the building materials as sufficient, ADA space is not required, the bollard height has been adjusted, pedestrian safety's been addressed, waste management and the adequacy of park, parking spaces is all seeming to be aligned for us. For these reasons, I move to approve the applicant's request.
We have a motion by Rich Brokaw and the support by Mrs. Bosberg. Any questions?
If we can add the drawing dates again?
What are the drawing dates? Good pickup, Rick. What are the drawing dates?
Are four-two-twenty-five.
So, added to the motion would be the drawing dates of April second of twenty-five. Kathy, do you still support?
Continued support, yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have support by Mr. Brokaw. I'm sorry, we have a motion by Mr. Brokaw, supported by Mrs. Bosberg, to approve Signs three-sixty-five site plan. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and welcome to Chesterfield.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any presentations, reports, or discussions? I don't think so. Any of the planning commissioners have any comments they'd like to make in three minutes? Right side, left side?
Only comment I have is to let you know at the next meeting, when you're starting, I won't be here because I'll be on an airplane to Florida for work, so I have to miss the next meeting.
It is. It's a conference, three days, sorry.
Thank you for letting us know that. So, no other comments? And if there are no other comments, and have you...
Is there any way we could, it seemed to be an echo in this. It's hard to hear the applicants.
They, they have experimented with a speaker, and I think at the last board meeting, that was creating issue, so there's been a little bit of shuffling trying to figure it out because those, those speakers point out. So, our first meeting we had here, we turned them up so we could hear up here, but then it was deafening to the crowd out there, so we're working on finding that balance between...
How long before you moved to the new building?
I don't know, have you heard an official date we're moving back? I don't know yet, but hopefully not much, too much longer. I think the only thing I heard was this summer. Yeah.
They filled in the, the cuts with cement and stuff, so when you see that carpet rolling out, I guess that might tell us. Yeah, carpet's the last thing to go in. So, did I make a motion to adjourn? No, I didn't make the motion yet. So, I was waiting for you guys to, you know, quit. Anyways, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at eight sixteen. Support. We have a motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Ralph Jaworski, to adjourn. All, all in favor?